Well, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. And we'll ask all of you to kick your phones on to silent if you would, please. Make sure we're all, that there's no disturbances here on TV. I too, on my, both my phones. And the other one that I'd like to welcome all that are here tonight for, we have a very large council meeting, we have a lot of awards being handed out, awards and special presentations. Plus too, that we've have such a high council here, and you can't see it at home, but our whole council chamber is well filled with different members who are receiving awards, and also the family. So, it's very well appreciated. So, to start off the meeting here on the Monday, March 26th, here at 5:00 PM, we will start off with approval of minutes of the regular council meeting held March 12th. And the strategic planning meeting held March 12th. Also, the special council meeting held March 8th, 2018. Do I have a motion, please?
Move that, your worship.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Approved. Additions to the agenda? Mr. Warren?
We have nothing, your worship.
Anybody, council members? We will move forward. Any public hearings and notices? If this, if there isn't, our first, on number four, delegation proclamations and petitions, our first motion on business is the appointment of our youth council. We have our youth council here, and at this point in time, if you would please go up to the podium, all the youth council, and we will have the appointments, please. Landen, go ahead, up to the podium. Yes, go up, yup, go up, yes, go up and read the motion there.
I'm very pleased to offer the following motion, that the following students be appointed as youth council members for the remainder of 2018. Landen Field, Louise Pasqua, Brogan Rieger, Nathaniel Prezian, and James Wheeler.
James is absent here tonight. James is stepping back from the...
Oh, well, take him out. I'll second that motion, your worship.
Any discussion? At this point in time, I'd just like to discuss and say that we have, we as a council have decided to have this youth council, so that we have input into our community from the youth. They are both the future and the present of our city, and we hope that we also, besides having the very meaningful information that is going to be given to us from the youth of our city as to what we should be doing here, and they have input, that we also hope that this will give you some political insight and further your political aspirations. So, at this time, I shall call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Thank you, and... Landen Field is our youth mayor, and he'll be called, and every now and then, there'll be other ones that step in place. The next order of business is the proclamation of Theater Fest. Shannon Elder, a known playwright, once stated, "If you are born with the ability to change someone's perspective or emotions, never waste that gift. It is one of the most powerful gifts God can give, the ability to influence." And that is what this Theater Fest and theater is all about. The Theater Fest will be in Weyburn from April 1st to April 8th, here, and whereas the arts and theater constitutes one of the main identity factors of the municipality of Weyburn and the quality of life of its citizens, whereas arts and theater is an intrinsic component of both individual and social development, whereas arts and theater arises and flourishes first locally, whereas Crocus 80 Theater in conjunction with the Theater Saskatchewan have been a strong supporter of the arts and theater for 38 years in the city of Weyburn, whereas the event is based on a true concern for the promotion of arts and theater in the city of Weyburn. Now, therefore, on the occasion of this provincial Theater Fest taking place in our city, I, Marcel Roy, Mayor of the City of Weyburn, hereby proclaim April 1st to April 8th, Theater Fest week. I hereby urge all citizens to participate by attending this exciting event. And the first one on Sunday will be Grease, will be the play, so, yes. Okay, so, if you would have, Frida, if you'd please come to the podium and speak to this proclamation.
Oh, I'm very happy to be here tonight to make sure that you all come out to the Theater Fest, April 1st to the 8th. It's being held at the Cognit Center. We're going to have people here from all over the province, seven different plays, one each night. We start out on April the 1st. Our play is A Child Shall Lead, and it's about the Holocaust, and we are featuring the youth in our theater program, so it's all the youth, plus we have the exchange student that's at the comp, she has signed on. So, we'd really like to welcome you there, and every night after the play, there is a green room, which will be held at the Tommy Douglas Center, and everyone is welcome to come there and mingle with the actors from the play, and you can visit with them. There's adjudications taking place at Microtel Hotel in the mornings at 10:30, so the public is very welcome to come to those as well. So, hoping we see you out there, that'd be great.
Thank you very much, Frida.
Thank you.
That should be a very good round of arts for the whole week while we were there. You'll be attending?
Absolutely.
Very good. And then, the next one that we have, we have the chief's commendations by the Weyburn City Police. There are some members here that have done outstanding work, and we'll let Chief Pritchard make these commendations.
Before I turn it over to Deputy Chief Stafford to read the citations, I just want to say a few words of what this is. Chief's commendations are given out for work, exceptional work. I mean, members of the Weyburn Police Service do outstanding work every day, most people in the community don't see that. We don't advertise our work often, but, you know, every year, there is some work that really stands out in the community. As a chief, I reach out to our sergeants and the deputy chief, and I say, "Is this worthwhile giving a commendation? Does it meet the bar of a commendation, whether it's for valor, meritorious service, or as you're going to hear today, a community policing award?" Both of the officers today are outstanding officers, and you're going to hear very soon why they deserve this commendation. So, I'm going to turn it over to Deputy Chief now, and he'll read out the awards.
Thank you, Chief Pritchard, your worship, members of council, ladies and gentlemen. I echo what the chief said, it's indeed an honor for anybody in uniform to stand up and recognize their peers for going above and beyond. We hire good people, and we expect that they do a good job every day. This is going far above that. So, without further ado, Constable Melinda Muntankel. In 2016, Constable Muntankel formulated and presented to the executive officers of the Weyburn Police Service a community policing initiative that she hoped would increase awareness around impaired driving, and in turn, reduce the incidence of impaired driving and increase road safety both within Weyburn, but also on the surrounding highways. The initiative was to be a true collaboration of community partners, with the underlying premise being that other ride options are available if an individual has been drinking and believes they are impaired. During the next several months, Constable Muntankel met with all the owners of the local taxi companies, as well as the owners or managers of every liquor establishment within Weyburn. She also met with many local businesses to try and build an incentive program. She was able to build a community coalition to help reduce impaired driving. Every liquor establishment and taxi company within the city became partnering agencies. In addition, Constable Muntankel was able to find sponsoring companies and organizations such as SGI, MAD Canada, and 12 local companies that helped with program funds, advertising, and weekly prizes. Prior to launching the program, Constable Muntankel developed an advertising campaign and trained personnel from the local participating liquor establishments on the processes of the program. The program, This Rides On Us, was officially launched on August 29th, 2017. The program had the participating liquor establishments and their staff encouraging their patrons, who had been drinking, not to drive, but to turn their keys into the staff for a free taxi coupon. The keys would later be delivered or picked up and taken to the police office for safe keeping. Those that took part in the program had their names put in for a weekly draw, as well as a monthly grand prize. To encourage liquor establishment staff to participate, the staff member involved was also put in for a weekly prize. Since the commencement of the program, on average, over 20 individuals took advantage of the This Rides On Us each month. Though the program had some impaired drivers using other options to get home safely, the real benefit to the program was the increased community awareness and the way that the city of Weyburn and community embraced the program. The program had 100% of the city liquor establishments partner with the police service, but requests from the community from organizers of private functions soon resulted in the program expanding to all organized functions where liquor was being served. Over the course of the last six months, numerous events partnered with the police service to ensure those attending their event had one more option to get home safely after drinking. The program has had a positive and observable impact. The amount of vehicles left parked overnight at liquor establishments and certain private functions have increased notably. In addition, in analyzing impaired driving and report in driving or rid calls over a three-year period, a statistically significant impact appeared to have occurred. The statistics and comparable periods through to July of each year, if used to forecast the remainder of the year, indicated that 2017 would be consistent with prior years for both rid calls and impaired driving charges. Since the start of This Rides On Us, there have been reductions in both rid calls and charges of impaired driving. In comparisons of the months, August to January 2015, and 16 to the same period 2017, there were reductions in rid calls received of 9% and 12% respectively, and during the same type periods, reductions in impaired driving charges were 50% and 45%. During the months this program has been operational, check stops have found more individuals aware of the program, and many indicating they have a designated driver. The positive comments from the community, media, and participating individuals, as well as noticeable reductions in impaired driving, have resulted in the program being continued until the summer of 2018. And the citation will read, "Chief's commendation for community policing, Constable Melinda Muntankel, is commended for her unfailing dedication to the betterment of the community through innovative problem-solving and community partnerships, and in particular, for her initiative and development of a public awareness campaign, This Rides On Us, designed to reduce impaired driving in Weyburn and area."
Thank you very much.
Constable Barch has become a spokesperson and advocate for police members who are suffering from mental health-related issues. He has worked tirelessly, both locally and provincially, to bring awareness of mental health issues and challenges that those suffering face. To further bring police and first responder mental health to the forefront of conversation, he chose to run a full marathon, which is 26.2 miles, in full uniform and equipment, including bulletproof vest, to highlight mental health awareness. During his training, which he started in October 2015, it was learned that he was the only police officer that he knew of in Canada that had run a full marathon while in uniform. He partnered with the Canadian Mental Health Association Weyburn Office, using his running efforts to raise public awareness and much-needed funds for local mental health programming. His efforts were noticed by the city of Weyburn as he was often highlighted in local media and at events sponsored by CMHA. In May 2016, Constable Barch ran the Saskatoon Marathon in full uniform, completing the run in a time of 5 hours, 45 minutes. Throughout 2016, he continued his run for mental health, completing runs in Estevan and a half marathon in Saskatoon, each time in full uniform. During 2016, he was appointed as a member of the Board of Directors for the Weyburn CMHA, a position to which he continues to hold. Constable Barch raised in excess of $2,500 for the Weyburn branch of CMHA, and was named Newsmaker of the Year by Discover Weyburn. His commitment to mental health awareness continued throughout 2017, running the Regina Police Service Half Marathon, the Saskatoon Half Marathon, the Weyburn Opportunity Road Race, and the 10K Queen City, again, all in full uniform. He has become a fixture in the city of Weyburn and is known as the running cop, as he often trains in uniform. In fact, in 2017 alone, he ran over 139 kilometers. His running has resulted in many opportunities to speak to groups about his own personal mental health journey. His commitment to bringing awareness to mental health through his running in uniform has created other opportunities, as he will be running in California in the Run to Remember in April 2018. This run is dedicated to the fallen officers in both United States and Canada, and the organizers are hoping to have one current-serving member run in full uniform in remembrance of those that have made the ultimate sacrifice. Constable Barch will be representing one of the three officers who lost their lives in the line of duty in Canada in 2017. Constable Barch has continuously demonstrated his desire to bring awareness to mental health, and it is our pleasure, on behalf of the chief, to present him with this citation, which reads, "Chief's commendation for community policing, Constable Jeffrey Barch, is commended for his unfailing dedication to the betterment of the community through his commitment to mental health awareness. His many efforts include running marathons in full uniform, sitting on the local mental health board, raising funds for mental health, and partnering both provincially and internationally in focusing on mental health issues through his commitment to being a visible champion Thank you, everyone, that is our presentation. We now move forward to service awards by the fire department. If the chief could have some words, please?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. Great pleasure to come before you tonight with some candidates for 20-year and 40-year exemplary service medals. These medals are federally, federal medals, and they are in recognition of exemplary service, as we alluded to, as the medal speaks to, it's an exemplary service medal. It's available to all members of the Canadian Fire Service, the Fire Commissioner's Office, and Canadian Forces Fire Service personnel. Exemplary service is categorized by good conduct, industry, and efficiency. Personnel who have attained additional tenure increments of additional service as above 20 years receive bars. It gives me great pleasure to have three candidates before you tonight, your worship and council. We have retired platoon leader Soder, who have 40 years' service, platoon leader Michael Kype, and firefighter Wade Oberg, both have 20 years' service. Retired platoon leader Soder joined the fire service in 1971, and, sorry, platoon leader Kype in 1995, and also Wade Oberg in 1995.
Could I have Mr. Soder come forward, please? Wayne's retired, but he never got a chance to have another presented before. He's already... Yes, we're... And there's this, the bard. Thank you. Thank you. Platoon leader Kype, could you come forward, please? First off, I'd like to, as a part of this exemplary service medal presentation, we'd like to thank all the personnel of the fire department for their dedicated service. Platoon leader Kype and Oberg are joining a lead corps of Weyburn fire personnel that have already received this medal. They include fire chief Almond, platoon leaders Kerr and Cook, firefighters White Oak, Benning, Struthers, and Erith. Total combined years of service for Weyburn fire personnel is 384 years. All very well done to all the firefighters that work hard within our community. The, we'll move forward now, reports of standing committees, there are none. Consent agenda, the council receivable, December 31st, 2017. Do you have a motion, please?
Worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that the council receivable report for December 2017 be accepted as presented.
Second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. The next motion, council payable. Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the purchases in the amount of $1,472,288.39 from March 8th to March 22nd, 2018, be passed for payment.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion. Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. Pedestrian ramp installation, RFP, Director of Engineering?
On February 9th, 2018, pedestrian ramp installation and concrete repair request for proposal was posted on SaskTenders and the city website. The request for proposal was prepared to allow bidder to provide quotation for the project in two parts. Part one, replacement for existing curbs, gutter, and walk, as required, was accessible with pedestrian ramps at seven locations. Part two, replace curb and sidewalks panels that were previously removed during the excavation activities in Weyburn, Saskatchewan. Quotation was received by the city of Weyburn. A total of eight bidders' proposals were received, and the results for the proposal are shown in the table attached. Recommendation, it is recommended that part one and part two for 2018, accessible ramps, installation, and concrete repair contracted, contract to be awarded to Huseni Concrete and Paving Stone Limited of Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan.
I'll make a motion, your worship, that part one and two of the 2018 accessible ramp, pedestrian, accessible pedestrian ramp installation and concrete repair be contracted, awarded to Huseni Concrete and Paving Stone Limited of Moose Jaw, Saskatchewan.
I'll second that, your worship.
Just one question, your worship, when I, when I read through this, there's quite a variance in the dollars amount from the seven or eight people that bid this. I'm assuming they're all seeing the same information on it, but that's quite a difference. I don't know, I don't know I have a question in that for you or not, but it just, just the awareness of the amount...
Okay, just, I guess the question would be then, why the difference? Could you answer that?
Last year, like, you know, the budget for seven ramps was $35,000, the same amount we requested the bidders to bid on, and we got a bidder, like, you know, and he was the same guy, Huseni Concrete and Paving Stone. He came into the city, he did the work in a good manner. For this year, we budgeted the same, however, because we already have tendered this request for proposal ahead of time, like, you know, in February, so we got, I think, a competitive pricing. This could be the issue here.
It's just good to see as many tenders in there as what we have, where we know that we've got some good use of our dollars.
Any further questions? Call the question, all in favor? Carried unanimously. We go on to 2018 paving tender? Natter?
February 9th, 2018, we, we, we published a request for proposal for asphalt and paving at SaskTenders and the city website. The request for proposal was prepared to allow bidders to provide quotation for the project at three parts. Part one, mail and pave the asphalt surface at the intersection of Sims Avenue and Moore Street and Fifth Avenue southeast between Third Street South and Fourth Street South. Part two, supply and hand place asphalt to repair excavated road surfaces at various locations throughout the city of Weyburn. Part three, supply and place asphalt for walking trails at River Park within Weyburn. Quotation was received on February 29th. A total of six proposal was received, and the result of the proposals are shown in the attached table. The lowest bidder is received for mailing and recapping the intersection of Sims Avenue and Moore Street was 46% of the lowest bid rate. and Moore Street was 46% of the lowest bid received in September 2017, resulting in a potential save of more than $60,000. So our recommendation is to, is to award part one and part three of the 2,000 asphalt and paving contract to ASL Paving Limited of Regina, Saskatchewan, and part two of the 2018 asphalt and paving concrete to be awarded to Suris Valley Paving of Estevan, Saskatchewan.
I'll make a motion, your worship, that ASL Paving Limited of Regina be awarded with part one in the amount of $159,633, and part three in the amount of $35,000 for the 2018 asphalt and paving contract, and Suris Valley Paving of Estevan be awarded part two in the amount of $26,588 of the 2018 asphalt paving contract in the city of Waverham.
Second?
I'll second, your worship.
Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Groundwater monitoring. Nader?
On February 5, 2018, Matrix Solution Inc. was asked to prepare a cost estimate to complete the 2018 groundwater monitoring program at the city landfill and sewage lagoons and associated data tables and reporting. The quotation was received by the city of Waverham on March 2nd, and it summarized as below. Primary lagoon diversion total cost is $7,824.08. Secondary lagoon storage at $7,201.52, and for monitoring the landfill at a cost of It is recommended that the 2018 groundwater monitoring program at the city of Waverham diversion lagoon and the storage lagoon be conducted by Matrix Solution Inc. at an estimated cost of $7,824.08 and $7,201.52 respectively. It is recommended that the 2018 groundwater monitoring program at the city of Waverham landfill be conducted by Matrix Solution as well at an estimated cost of $33,183.13.
Resolution?
Thanks, your worship. I'll make a motion that the 2018 groundwater monitoring program at the city of Waverham diversion lagoon and storage lagoon be conducted by Matrix Solutions Inc. at an estimated cost of $7,824.08 and $7,201.52 respectively, and further, that the 2018 groundwater monitoring program at the city of Waverham landfill be conducted by Matrix Solutions at an estimated cost of $33,183.13.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Lagoon pump and aeration installation?
On February 15, 2018, the lagoon pump assessment and procurement and aeration installation assessment request for proposal was posted on Sask tenders and the city website. The request for proposal was prepared to allow bidders to provide quotation for the project in three parts. Part one, for assessment of pumping requirement and design. Part two, tender management for procurement of transfer station pump and all associated upgrades. Part three, assessment of the suitability of the previously procured lagoon erator. A total of four proposal were received, and the result of the proposal are as follows. EMS Corson at $96,416, KGS Group at $28,638, MPE Engineering Limited at $30,026, RCH Consulting Limited at $22,528. It is recommended that the lagoon pump assessment and procurement and erator installation assessment contracted, contract to be awarded to MPE Engineering Limited.
Do I have?
Thanks, your worship. I'll make a motion that the bid of MPE Engineering Limited to provide the lagoon pump assessment and procurement and aerator installation assessment in the amount of $30,026 exclusive of taxes be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Road grader tender?
The tender called for the supply of one road grader with a snow red type mold board wing extension pre-installed. The unit will be utilized by the public work for infrastructure maintenance purposes. It is budget, like, the budget for the fleet service contains $280,000 after the trade for this purchase for a unit, a 1985 Caterpillar 140 unit. The tender was advertised on Sask tenders website and the city of Waverham website as well. A total of six bidder was received from four suppliers. The lowest, like, the lowest bidder, Finning Canada, out of Regina, at a cost, a modified cost because there was a mistake in the tender, to $223,529. So it is recommended that the tender to be awarded to Finning of Regina in the amount of $223,529, including a trade of a 1985 Caterpillar unit at a $40,000 value.
Your worship, I'll make a motion that the bid of Finning Canada of Regina Sask display 2017 Caterpillar 140K in the amount of $223,529, including trade-in of a 1985 Caterpillar, value at $40,000, be accepted as presented.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? I guess that the redhead, I have a question. The redhead has put in a bid for how many thousand dollar lower? About 20,000?
Twenty thousand.
Lower. The question that I have, if you could answer it, is, is it because of the seven-year warranty that you're going with?
No. Most of them, they have the same warranty.
Both the response for the request for proposal, they quoted a snow wing as well. It wasn't required in the request for proposal, so they quoted this value of the $242,672. When our guys went there in Regina, because the specification fits to the needs of our department, they went there and they discovered that you already have included this, and it wasn't needed, so he deducted the amount for the snow wing, which was the difference.
Okay.
Around 19,000.
So on the next page of the report, he actually has a description of what Nader just went through for that recommendation.
Okay.
See, on the very top of that.
I missed that as I just went through all the other ones, so. Okay. Call the question. All in favor? Go on to the next one. Tractor, snow blower, tender?
A tender called for the supply of 100 horsepower front-wheel assessed tractor with a front-mounted snow blower. The unit will be utilized by the Parks Department for infrastructure maintenance purposes. The 2018 fleet service budget contains $125,000 after trade for this purchase. A 1987 Ford tractor was offered for trade. In total, eight bids were received from six suppliers. After the review, one bid from a non-local supplier was disqualified for inability to supply all items. The remaining seven bids are summarized on the chart below and excluding GST.
Your worship, with that, I'd like to make a motion that the bid from Magatara of Waverham, Saskatchewan, to supply of a 2018 Massey S711 Schultz SDX-840 blower in the amount of $91,520.51, including trade-in of a 1987 Ford tractor valued at $3,500, be accepted as presented.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion.
Discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Bank tender?
Your worship, I'll declare conflict of interest and step out. Thanks.
Finance officer? Miss Al?
On February 1st, I delivered our bank service tender to all of the six banks in Waverham, and it was very detailed in what we were looking for, for them to provide us interest rates and fees for everything that they provide. With this information, we put together a calculation, I should say, all of them submitted a request or a proposal, and so with this information, we did a calculation based on the average interest on a balance of $5 million, and that came out with Waverham Credit Union having the highest percentage of the average. The fees, Scotiabank actually came out with the lowest, but overall, having the higher interest and even with some fees at the Waverham Credit Union, they came out with the best percentage. So based on that, I would suggest that we award Waverham Credit Union with our bank services.
Motion?
Your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that the bid of the Waverham Credit Union to provide banking services for the city of Waverham for the period of May 1, 2018 to April 30, 2023, be accepted as recommended by the Director of Finance.
I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Call the question.
Your worship, just, just one question. Laura, we had only a two-year contract previously, is that correct? It was a five-year?
No, it was a five.
Oh, how time flies.
Yeah.
I thought it was only a two-year, but okay. Thank you.
Yeah.
Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. If you could ask Mr. Richards to come back in. At this time, the Police Board appointment, Board of Police Commission has one vacancy. At this time, Mr. McCormick, if you'd please come forward. Do you have a motion?
Your worship, yes.
Go ahead.
Your worship, I have a motion that Ram McCormick of Waverham, Saskatchewan, be appointed as Member-at-Large to the City of Waverham Board of Police Commissioners for the remainder of 2018.
Your worship, I'll second that motion.
All in favor? At this point in time, we'd like to welcome you to the Board of Police Commission. Danette, you have given all your, Mr. McCormick, you've given all your information to Danette so that you'll be aware of the next police commission that, yeah, very good. Thank you. Tax enforcement consent for title? Announce.
So we have two properties right now that we are asking for consent to take title of. They have been in tax enforcement since 2016, as they haven't paid taxes since 2014. So their 15, 16, 17 taxes are owing. This is regular procedure based on legislation.
Your worship, I'm prepared to make a motion that the consent of, for the title of the following properties under section 21.26.1, the Tax Enforcement Act, be accepted as presented. Lot 12, Block 47, Plan M4926, and Lot 41, 42, 43, Block A1, Plan AR5116.
I'll second that, your worship.
Could you give this to us in people terms, what places those are? Do we have addresses? No? Or you can't? Okay. As you're going, yeah, so, okay. So, call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. Extrication tool purchase, fire chief Almond?
Thank you, your worship, members of council. I am back before you again. This is year four of a capital project phased-in approach we're doing to replace some of our extrication tools, and what we're doing is we're replacing them with cordless battery over hydraulic extrication tools. This purchase was included in the 2018, approved 2018 capital budget. We can achieve additional savings with this purchase. It actually came in a lot less than budget, and also because we can include this as part of our new apparatus purchase, it becomes PST exempt. The tools that we intend to purchase are manufactured by Hurst Extrication, and our local dealer is Rocky Mountain Phoenix out of Red Deer, Alberta. We've had excellent service from this dealer in the past, and I see no reason why this won't continue in the future. I received an updated quote on this for the sum of $12,249 Canadian, and I've attached that. This part purchase is part of their dealer-specific sale zones, and as such, we can, because of our geographic location, we can only purchase it from Rocky Mountain Phoenix in Red Deer, Alberta. However, I have contacted another Hurst dealer in another province that I've had dealings with in the past, and they confirmed that this is a very competitive price. It has an interdepartmental liaison, does this purchase. We actually, all our tools and equipment are available for, for other city departments to use. All we say is that we use them, we'll do the job for you, and I see our extrication tools have been used in the past by some city departments.
Can I have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the bid of Rocky Mountain Phoenix Incorporated of Red Deer, Alberta, in the amount of $12,249 for the supply of an extrication ram and accessories be accepted as presented. Do you have a second?
I'll second that motion, your worship.
You have, do you have a second? Call the question? No, you mean, discussion?
Thank you, worship. Chief Simon, how much below budget is this purchase?
It's quite considerably below budget. I believe budget was $16,000, and this is coming in at 12.
That's the good part, but it still scares me when you only have one bid. I think you're familiar with my questioning.
Yeah, I am, sir.
So I think you explained it already.
Yes.
But is this, is this consistent with this in fire that only one firm bids?
It's, it's consistent because you're asking for a very specific manufacturer of tool, okay? And, and when we, when we start, when we start replacing tools, we do an evaluation process. So we, we compare tool A to tool B, and, you know, some of the factors that we consider is ease of use, training, and reputation, and things like that. So once we establish that we want Hurst tools, or we would like Hurst tools, then you fall under this dealer, it's their zone, okay? And I can't go, unlike buying a vehicle, if I want to buy a Chevy vehicle, I would prefer to buy it from Barbers. However, if I couldn't, I could buy it from Regina and bring it back. Extrication tools, I can't. I can't go to another province and bring it back. I could do, but I would lose all my warranty and everything like that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. Chief Almond, I appreciate you doing all of this work. I think you've answered this question for me offline, but I'd like it again. These tools now are cordless electric over hydraulic, and I, and I just want affirmation from you that you're confident in these tools, because I know that at one time, we sort of were discussing whether these were the right thing or not.
I was very skeptical, and, and because, you know, you have experience with cordless battery drills and things like that, and they wear out, and you're losing batteries. However, these tools have proven to be exceptional. We, when we, when we test them originally, we test them in our minus 40 day, and, you know, we've, we've had these cordless tools now for three years. This is year four, and we haven't been beat yet with it. It's actually the, the tool of choice to come off the truck. They're easy to use, they're more comfortable for the patient because there's no noisy engines running and things like that. So, no, I'm very happy with the cordless tools.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Call the question. All in favor? Carried unanimously. There is no introduction of bylaws, there's no unfinished business. We have new business. 2018 budget capital project revisions? Again, Director of Finance.
So the council had expressed some change in priorities, and that they wanted us to review the budget and see
review the budget and see if we could make any further cuts to it. So, we went through, and we have come up with a list of 323,700 that could be allocated to other projects. Most of these things are like facility repairs that we can push off for another year, or some software that we won't be purchasing. So, do you want to know what the, so the, some of the work that can be pushed off is like regrowding the pool, a floor at the leisure center, doing some card locks at City Hall, some rentals at City Hall, the museum, repointing the chimney, and we did have some savings on a tender that came back for the culvert repair, so that all adds up.
Your worship, I would like to make a motion that the 2018 capital project budget for the city of Waverne be adjusted in the amount of $323,700. To delete the following items and funds be redirected to be applied to the cost of downtown streetlight project. Citywide work software, $43,700. Finance, priority-based budgeting, $60,000. Leisure center, regrowd main pool basin, $30,000. Leisure center, new floor for common area, offices behind front counter, $55,000. Finance, card locks, $25,000. Council chamber mics, second floor renovations for City Hall, $25,000. Museum, repoint exterior brick on bottom 25 feet of chimney, $35,000. Works, culvert repair and replacement, 39 highway between Third Street and Government Road, $50,000.
Your worship, I'd like to second that motion. Discussion? Mr. Richards?
Thanks, your worship. I just wanted to commend both the Director of Finance for finding these, and also all of the people at, in, in leisure services. I know that the regrowding of the pool basin is going to be done, it's just going to be done by our own folks, and I just wanted to express my appreciation for them stepping up to the plate.
Thank you, Councilor Richards. Yes, we will be still doing that project. We'll do it internally instead of reneging a firm for that.
Excellent. Thank you.
Mr. Mickel?
Your worship, yes, I'd like to, to thank our finance department as well, as well as our engineering department, NADA, for bringing the information about lighting so quickly to this table that we could make that decision and have some lights on by least summertime. Thank you.
Thanks, Councilor Mickel.
Any more further discussion? As is stated here, home, this money will be allocated towards the streetlight, the development of the streetlight project downtown, and where is that at this stage?
The request for proposal already been released. We got a site tour last week. The closing date was supposed to be March 27th. However, because I found there is a lot of interest for potential bidders on this project, I extended this to close at April 3rd. So, the closing date for this bid right now is April 3rd, and it will be presented to the council for the April 23rd, I believe.
So, then we could, we may not even need to use the whole amount here. Possibly. Very good. And with that, call the question, all in favor? carried unanimously. Moving to home occupation, speech therapy. Amanda Coffin, building official?
Hi. Home occupation for 1759 Eagle Sham Avenue, 2018-003. We've had Leah Peterson from 1759 Eagle Sham Avenue propose to start a speech and language therapy business from her residence. It would operate from Monday to Friday between 8:00 to 5:00 with a minimal traffic increase of one vehicle per customer. Neighborhood notices were sent out February 26th and given until March 15th to voice any concern or issues. There were no concerns or objections received. As home occupations are permitted in any residential dwelling, staff is recommending approval with conditions. The conditions are as follows. No other person other than the resident of the dwelling unit shall be engaged in home occupation as an employee or volunteer. No advertisement carrying out the address of the dwelling with the home occupation occurs may be placed in any media. The face of any home business sign on site must not exceed .092 meters squared and must be placed within the inside half of the front yard setback. Home occupations are subject to periodic review, and the City of Waverne business license shall be obtained prior to operation of the home occupation.
Do you have a motion, please?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the application for a home occupation from Leah Peterson to operate a speech-language therapy business from her residence at 1759 Eagle Sham Avenue, Lot 30, Block 4, Plan 75R 37762 be approved with the conditions provided.
I'll second that, your worship.
Discussion? This is one of those things that has been brought during the campaign last time, brought that is one of the important type of feature, speech therapy. So, it's good to see that someone is stepping forward to present, do this business privately. So, therefore, call the question, all in favor? carried unanimously. Very good. And while you're up there, we will ask you about a discretionary use application, a dog kennel wishing to be sold.
Your worship, I'd like to excuse myself on this one for pure curiosity.
Okay. Is there anybody else that wishes to excuse themselves? Okay, at that point in time, we will move forward.
Discretionary use development permit for 225 First Avenue Southwest. We've had a proposal from Cindy Anne Bohm to develop a doggy daycare kennel for this site at 225 First Avenue Southwest. The zoning of this site is light industrial, and therefore, a commercial kennel is considered a discretionary use. A doggy daycare is where residents can bring their animals for short periods of time. There's a large area in the yard which would be fenced off to provide for outdoor play space. There is a maximum of 30 dogs anticipated at one time, however, not all dogs would be outdoors at the same time. As a discretionary use, neighborhood notices were sent out to 75-meter radius around the subject property on February 26th. We did receive one concern from an adjacent property owner at 205 First Avenue Southwest who has an existing residential home and has put a lot of money and time into improving their home. They are concerned that having a kennel beside them will have a negative effect on the resale value of their property. In recognizing that the proposal for this site is located in industrial zone and respecting the surrounding residential uses, staff is recommending approval of the doggy daycare and the kennel at 225 First Avenue Southwest, subject to the following conditions. A minimum of three off-street parking stalls must be provided and maintained on the property, meeting the design requirements of Section 14.1.8 of the zoning bylaw. A maximum of eight dogs shall be permitted outdoors at any one time to limit the noise. No dogs shall be permitted outdoors earlier than 9:00 AM or later than 10:00 PM daily as the residential uses are located south and east of the property. Any outdoor play space for the animals shall be kept in a neat and tidy order with regular maintenance as required under the Property Maintenance and Nuisance Abatement bylaw 2004-3021, which includes the prompt removal of any pet waste to eliminate accumulation and offensive odors. Any outdoor space for the dogs shall be completely screened in by a solid wall or a fence with a minimum height of 1.86 meters.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that the development permit application of Cindy Anne Bohm to operate a doggy daycare kennel at 225 First Avenue Southwest, Lot 15 and 16, Block 6, Plan AV5733 be approved with the conditions provided.
Well, I'll second that, your worship.
Any discussion? Go ahead, from the fore. Good, please.
Hi, your worship.
Yes.
And everybody in council. I appreciate everything that you've done in your, sorry about the throat here. There are some conditions that I cannot meet, though. It is a doggy daycare, it's not a kennel, so the animals will not be kept overnight. It is a place of training animals as well as owners. So, you would have, let's say, I called it Fido's Place. So, you would drop your animal off at Fido's Place, you would go through a screening to make sure that your animal was compatible with the rest of the pack. It'll be good for animals that can't be left at home by themselves, or if Fido needs exercise during the day, let's say you need to go into Regina for an appointment, and Fido needs a place to go. When you walk in, all dogs, it's like an indoor dog park, so there'll be apparatuses for them to play on, to learn their behaviors, kind of like an agility course, if you've ever seen agility. So, it would have apparatuses like that. Being the fact that there's probably going to be 25 dogs, which is the minimum at other daycares in there, it'll be very hard for the staff to take only eight dogs out to go to the bathroom every half an hour without having the rest of the dogs wanting to run out as well. The daycare will run from 6:30 in the morning till 6:30 at night. In the evenings and on weekends, there'll be training as in obedience, agility, first aid, other things like that. So, there will be dogs running around outside and in the kennel, or in the daycare. What else did you address? If they're coming at 6:30 in the morning, it'd be hard to keep them in there not to go to the bathroom until 9:00. So, I cannot oblige on that one, and I cannot oblige on only eight dogs going out at one time. As far as fencing in the area where the dogs will be playing, it's quite a big compound. And if the dogs are there for agility training, I don't think it's reasonable enough to actually encense and enclose with another fence six feet tall, just so the neighbors can't see the dogs. And that's my story, and I'm sticking to it.
So, there'll be some questions that, Mr. Richards? Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship, and thank you, Mrs. Bohm, for coming. This is a pretty cool idea, and I'm very excited about it, but I do have a number of questions, and Amanda, you may have to answer some of them, or I'm not sure, but I'll try to go through them as quickly as I can. First off, is there any, is there any authorization from the Health Authority that needs to be gotten to do this?
Am I on now? Okay. I've done some research, and there is actually no rules to abide by, health concerns or municipal.
Thank you. Next, I, just curious about the, the number of 30 dogs. So, that, is that a, obviously, that's not a legislative requirement, or there's no bylaw restricting 30 dogs, or?
No, there's not, and that's kind of unfortunate, because you have to know what you're doing to do this. When you come into the center, it will actually be partitioned off into three stages. That's the way that I've done it. I've actually researched and stopped at other daycares around Saskatchewan, and talked to one in Winnipeg and some in the States. And because it is like an indoor park, you know, the 25 of them will be, and I'm saying 25, because that's basically what everybody has, the 25 of them will be running, but when you bring your animal in, it'll actually, because it's got the three parts, it'll go into one part, which is kind of like a staging area, so they can kind of, you know, we can see if maybe, even though you told me your dog's not aggressive and likes to play well with others, we'll be able to assess the animal to make sure that they can go in with the rest. Or if maybe somebody's just not feeling like they want to socialize, you know, there'll be areas that they can go in. That's why I said there'll be maybe 30, because we might have five little dogs in one area that don't, you know, you don't want to put them in with big dogs, or Fido's come back from the vet, and he needs just some rest. So, with the 30 and the 25, it's kind of broken down into that. Does that answer your question?
Yep, thank you. I got a couple more.
Just before you do, there is, there is, this isn't a residence, right? You know, nobody's, it's just a, but there are residents, it's in an industrial, right?
Some of the property is the Waverne Trailer Court, and just east is an existing dwelling unit.
But just east?
She shares a property line.
Yeah, but this is zoned industrial.
That property is light industrial, yes.
And so, it's light industrial?
Yes.
And zoned property for this?
Yes.
Okay, and was it an old house? Is it, or is it a building, or?
Right now, it's a new contractor shop.
A new, it's a contractor shop?
She's looking at leasing, yep.
No, but that's, I'm just saying it's a contractor shop, right? New building?
Yeah.
Just a couple more questions, your worship. Thank you very much. Just a couple of questions around the time, and I can appreciate that, but I, I'm embarrassed to say, I'm not exactly sure what our noise bylaw is and what sort of quiet time is, and this, is it not 8:00 AM to 11:00?
7:00 AM.
7:00 AM to 11:00. Okay.
And we have the chief of police here to answer those questions.
Yeah, so I guess that would be my next question is, is not just to the chief, but largely to the chief, but to all of us. Do we need to do a trial period for this thing to make sure that it's going to be okay? Because I can, I've heard 30 dogs barking before. I've been by the Waverne Humane Society on a warm Saturday afternoon, and I most assuredly would not want that in my backyard.
Well, I was raised in a kennel, literally. I started training dogs when I was probably grade one, I was like full force, hired at the dog shows to do their dogs, but it's a different atmosphere. Like, you have the dogs, so we say 6:30 to 6:30. So, by the time you drop Fido off, he's already gone to the bathroom, right? So, when we say 6:30, it's for those people that start work at 7:00 o'clock, Fido comes in, we say about every half an hour, they go outside to go to the bathroom. So, I might have to go more often, you know, depends how old they are. But as far as barking, you know, when they get playing and stuff, I can see your concern, like in the summer, like the great big overhead door will be open, there'll be swimming pools out there, it'll look like a daycare, but only you won't see kids, you'll see your fur babies there instead. So, there might be some noise, but I can't see it being like the Humane Society, like the kennel that, you know, we had when I was growing up, because they'll be playing with each other, they won't be barking at each other, if that makes sense.
Okay, thanks.
Mickel?
Thank you, worship. Cindy, the, the project has merit, but I have trouble supporting it, and I'll tell you the reason why. The house immediate east of you has a concern, there's a letter of opposition, and the trailer court is immediate south. So, with, with those particulars, in my, in my opinion, or my view, the sound and the smell could cause a problem, and for that reason only, I will not support this motion.
But at the same time, what we have to look at is that this is zoned light industrial, and so we could have many different types of businesses that could go, that could go in there, and it doesn't really make any difference whether to the sound or whatever. And then, we are, chief, are you familiar with how the sound, the noise bylaw is written?
It's caused disturbance to other, other individuals, so in all fairness, the time does not matter. It can be a...
If you could just come up to the mic, please.
Your worship, the, the noise bylaw gives the authority that if it's disturbing other individuals, so although there is a timeframe in there, it's also open enough that if somebody is disturbing somebody else in the middle of the afternoon, there is an enforcement opportunity, or we are able to use that bylaw to, to lay charges under the noise bylaw at any time of the day or night, so.
Mr. Johnson?
Cindy Anne, is the fence between the neighbor and the shop, like one or the other's ownership? Guess concern is if they have a picket fence between, is that theirs, or?
There's actually, the building that we're talking about was Halleck's old butcher shop, and there is a great big fence around the compound as well. And I can also respectfully say that if this, this is going to happen in Waverne, may not be right now, if that's not the perfect building, it's going to happen. It's the building that I found, that was in my budget, although I'm respectful of neighbors too, so if you don't think it's right, I can, I can appreciate that.
We also have to kind of, now I'm picturing where, which building it is, and just to the north is Ford, which has lots of automotive noise all the time, and there's diesel noise and all that other type of noise. There's the one house is, there's one lone house there to the, to the east, and then the trailer court, trailer court, which is a fair distance across the road. Yes, but there's still the house is, there's still a distance, quite a distance along the way. So, where, being zoned light industrial, it is zoned light industrial. Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I have had the pleasure of using the services of Doggy Daycare in Alberta, and it is significantly different atmosphere than a dog, like an SPCA. The dogs that go to a doggy daycare aren't in stress. Their, their owners bring them in, drop them off, and for the most part, dogs are well behaved, and they only bark when they're not in a happy mood. So, my experience, it was a pleasant experience. When I went in and dropped my dog off, there was no barking, the dogs were all well behaved, and... and I, I think Waverne needs something like this. I know myself, we could have used a service many times over the last fifteen years, but it wasn't available, so I commend you for coming forward with this and I will support this.
Mr. Van Betcher?
Thank you, worship. I do note that on the light commercial zoning bylaw, it says it's allowed, but as long as there's no offensive noise, smell, or other forms of pollution for, in a light commercial, so. I would support it if it was on a year trial basis, but because I think, to me, it's an unknown. I would hate for it to disturb the other residents. I think it's a great idea, but as I say, because it's an unknown to myself, I would support it for a year trial. And I don't know whether that works or not, but going forward, I think that is probably the only way I would support it.
Your opinion on a year trial? Your opinion on a year trial?
To try it out for a year, it's a, it's a big investment, you know, getting in all of the training equipment and if I have to, you know, remodel the fence and everything like that. Is there a suggestion for a different location, maybe? Like if it's a noise thing, would it be better in a, you know, a more industrial area? I know the ones that I've gone to, like the one in Regina, for instance, and the one in Saskatoon are more of an industrial area than more of a residential area. Now, having said that, the one in Saskatoon backs onto a hotel. So, you know, the people that stay at the hotel get to, you know, witness the dogs in the backyard, but I can respect any of your decisions.
Mr. Van Betcher?
That being said, Cindy, as you said, I don't think we've, any of us have had enough, maybe enough time to really look into it, but if there are other doggy daycares throughout the province, would it be possible that we could table this and maybe talk to other owners of doggy daycare about what the noise factor may be and get some further information? Because I hate, I hate to turn it down and then you're another year before you can reapply or, and I get your, and I get your, you know, you can't invest money and time and then be out in a year. I just wonder if that's a possibility.
Just out of respect for the owner of the building, he has been waiting until we went through this process and he's been holding it and not leasing it out until I come back with an answer. He's willing to do a one-year lease, but I don't want to leave him hanging either. So, you know, if this, if you don't feel this is the right area, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. If you don't feel this is the right area and you want to do it for a trial period of one year, I don't think it's also fair to the owner of the building.
So I do have one other question. So the property that you're talking about, would the, the outdoor area be on the west side of the building or would it be on the property line shared by the residents?
Yes, it's on the west side.
So when the dogs are outside, you would have the building between the dogs and the residents?
No, I will not. I'll have, they have their own fence and then I'm just going to look at the picture here real quick. There is a property line, my fence, I think, could probably be within a foot of their fence kind of thing when you're going, like if this was the, the property right there and then my fence and then there's space in between the buildings that the dogs won't be in, but they'll be right up against their fence, like a foot away.
Mr. Michael?
As I said, Cindy, this concept is a, is a great concept and I, and I thank you for bringing it to us, but there, maybe there's another location in, around Waverne that we can have this, your worship? Without killing this rate tonight, maybe we can postpone and whatever and have another look and see what's happening. Because I hate, it's a good concept, but at that particular location, because there's residential and it, it's not going to work.
Richard?
Thanks, your worship. Amanda, when you were working on this, did you find any best practices or, I mean, from some other cities that have got these where they're, how they're, you know, like Cindy said, some of them maybe back up on a hotel and I mean, that's, that is a little bit different because you, you know, a hotel guest doesn't spend time in the yard generally, right? But I guess what I'm trying to say is, is there some research from other communities that-
I did look into what other surrounding cities have and they more or less laid out certain requirements they should have for the animals. As far as zoning was concerned or noise issues, it was mainly that any should be located one hundred and fifty meters away from residential. That was the biggest thing I found, which the Waverne Trailer Court is right around one hundred and fifty meters south. It's just the property right east, which council had just rezoned in two thousand and fourteen to R three. Otherwise, that was also a light industrial property.
That was a light industrial-
Where the dwelling is, was light industrial, but in two thousand and fourteen, they wanted to do a bunch of restoration and fixing up, which would have been illegally non-conforming use. Therefore, they seeked rezoning and council did rezone it to R three.
So in actual, so in actual essence, this is, in actuality, this is, was all industrial, light industrial.
This two hundred block of First Avenue Southwest was all light industrial.
Worship, we also allowed the gentleman with the east property to add, put addition on his houses because of that reason. We allowed that a couple of years ago. And he has done that.
In light industrial.
In that area, but it's not light industrial now.
I know. I mean, it was light industrial.
It was, but it's changed.
And Cindy Anne, you also still have two concerns and that's the time, right?
That is correct.
And also the fence, which I don't know if you've ever seen that black plastic inserts? I don't know if that would be sufficient enough to install-
That is one of the, the options that other people have done and they say it's great for the summer, however, with our winds in Saskatchewan, it actually would blow the grommets right off. So I was thinking the weaving, but if you look at the building and, well, you can see the red roof. So the fence actually goes right from the, the back of the building all the way around to where you get up to the front corner and there's an angle, that's where the big gate is. So it's already fenced all the way around and I would just have, yeah, you can see the fence right there, sort of. I would just have the animals at the back, if you just took that fence straight to the back or the building right to the back fence line. We would put a fence of some sort barrier there just for when they're in the daycare, they could just go out. So that would be against the house and then the Ford parking lot. However, when we're doing agility and stuff or training, we're going to need the rest of the, the compound to do that in. And then the other problem was only letting eight dogs at a time. That's a big concern as well.
Just a few more, just, I'm just kicking this around. So actually, the dogs won't be on the west side of the building, they'll largely be on the north side of the building, backing right on to the neighbor's backyard, is that-
That's correct.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So Cindy Anne, what would it mean to you if we approved this tonight and then over the next twelve months, the noise violations got to such a point where we had to deal with it again or the complaints or whatever? I, I understand, like what Counselor Van Betch was saying, what I was sort of thinking as well was, you know, one-year trial and I completely understand it, then you've got to lay out all the money and could have that carpet taken out from under you at the end and we don't want to do that for sure. But what my fear is that we end up in that situation anyways.
Right. And I like to buy my bracelets, I don't like people to give them to me. Thank you. So I don't, I don't want to cause any problems with our, our gentleman to my left here. You know, and what would happen to all these people that, you know, have their babies come into the daycare and it's like, oh, sorry, people, you know, you're going to have to come get all your dogs because the owner's been arrested.
I think the issue that we're facing, I think everybody around the room thinks this is a great idea.
Mm-hmm.
This is something our city needs. There is a property there, though, that is going to be a-
And if it's not the right property, I, I understand, because like you were saying with the, you know, with the, the people next door, they put a lot of heart and soul into renovating their building and I can respect that.
Have you looked at other properties?
I have looked at a couple other properties. There are possibilities because this one here is, it's not perfect, but it would work because you've got to start small and build up and the price was great. I think if I put a little bit more time into it, I might find something else. You know, I agree that this is something that Waverne needs and if it's not the right time at this moment because of the neighbors, I can respect that. I just want to respect the owner of the building too and give them the news.
Might I suggest that we, that although the, the owner is doing, would like to see something done in a fairly special fashion, I'm sure the two weeks either which side won't, you know, to table it for two weeks because we would hate to defeat the motion and then you'd have to come back a year later and do it again. So what I would be, look at the two weeks we're table, table it for the next.
Well, and I guess my, also my concern is even if we approve it and there's still conditions that you already can't meet, so we're kind of default anyways there. So I, I do feel also that maybe it is worth tabling it for two more weeks. Yourself, Amanda, get a little more information and, and, you know, maybe there is another conversation with the neighbors. I know they're how, the place is for sale too, so maybe we won't have an issue with the next owner. You know, that's, that's a concern also. These guys might not like it, but the next owner might be fine with it, so.
Maybe somebody will buy it and turn it into a cat house.
So do we have, do you wish, there's a, the motion, do you want, wish to table it for, till the next meeting?
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that we table this until we can further investigate for two weeks possibly.
Two weeks?
Second that, your worship.
Call the question, all in favor of tabling? Table the motion for two weeks, the next, till the next, and that should give you time to-
Is there something I need to do in the meantime?
In that period, in that period of time that you talk to Amanda, search me, look for other ones, see how you can be able to comply to these conditions that she set forward and I'll give you a couple more weeks and then come back to us, to there. That way, we're not killing it completely.
Can I ask one more question? If by chance, we decide that it's not the right location and I've spent the five hundred dollars for the discretionary use, do I have to spend another five hundred dollars for another discretionary use for another building?
Yes, it would be required.
Okay.
But I think, but I think you can bring it to council and ask for meaning.
Can I ask for forgiveness? Okay. Thank you. Please forgive me.
Okay. Thank you. There's no inquiries or announcements? Is there any inquiries or announcements, you say? Oh, yeah. Who do we have? In the meantime, gentlemen, do you have any inquiries that will be, if you have any inquiries, think, think about them and we'll bring them forward. Any inquiries or announcements? Go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. Just a quick inquiry of the Director of Engineering. I noticed some work today on Government Road where I believe the road was torn up to do some lead line replacement. I think that's what them spots are along Government Road and I seen one of our loaders out there working. So was, question posed to me at work, when will the repairs start on those spots that were tore up on Government Road?
It is scheduled for like, you know, the asphalt request for roads are just like, you know, awarded.
Yep.
Like, you know, part of it is patching those with holes.
Thank you.
But that being said, we are still moving forward with the project, are we not, to replace the lines, the water and sewer lines from seven-eleven down to railway or has that been put on hold?
At this point of, of a time, like, you know, we need to reassess this section because we don't have enough information. I have discussed this with my crew, so they don't feel that they have enough information about Government Road for water main replacement for this year and they need to reallocate the funds for another project, which maybe, like, I will discuss it with you later on, maybe one of them will be Mergen's Road.
Okay, and that's where, but that's where, because we have that leftover money from the grant that we're going to use onto that.
Exactly.
Okay. You're smiling. So, any other, any other inquiries? Very good. And with that, there's no notice of motions, no request for clarification? You don't want anything else clarified? You're good tonight, okay? And there's no committee of the whole and with that, we will say, call this meeting adjourned.